Joanna Wilson.
I have done this before. I have brought written statements. I don't know what else to say. I don't know how else to say it, but we are, our neighborhoods are being invaded. Our neighbors are being kidnapped by our government, by masked agents driving cars where they're trading plates to keep their cars secret. They are intimidating people who are lawfully following them and trying to see what they're actually doing. And I need you all to act like the emergency this is. The federal government has declared war on us, and that is an emergency. That's all I have to say.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair Harrington and members of the Commission. For the record, my name is Evelyn Cochrane, and I'm a lifelong resident of Beaverton. I'm here today to ask you to declare a state of emergency over immigration raids in Washington County and to codify Washington County sanctuary status. Our county is the most diverse county in Oregon, with nearly 40% of the county identifying as nonwhite. Because of this, we have disproportionately been targeted by immigration officials, with raids and detentions now occurring nearly every single day. This has led to unidentified masked men with guns arriving in unmarked vehicles and snatching people off of our streets without identifying themselves, disappearing our neighbors, our friends, and our family members. They have been documented speeding, threatening, and attacking peaceful protesters, conducting unlawful searches and seizures, and leaving abandoned cars in public rights of way. This flaunting of our rights cannot be allowed to continue, especially in the place where I grew up and I call home. As a community, we are afraid. Children are afraid to go to school, parents are afraid to go to work, and community members are afraid to do things like buying food, going to church, or even seeking medical attention. As a first-generation immigrant and a nonwhite resident of Washington County, I am terrified that I, a natural-born American citizen, will be victim to a Kavanaugh stop and be indefinitely detained purely because of my race, something which the Supreme Court has ruled is legal. Washington County residents deserve to have our county stand up for us in this moment, the same way that Los Angeles County did just two weeks ago. We deserve the full might of the county government standing up for us, not just the immigrant members of our community, but also all of us who have had to endure nameless, faceless kidnappings, endless helicopter surveillance, and rising fear due to the lawless and unconstitutional actions of the federal government. I urge you to do whatever is in your power to stop this, including declaring a state of emergency, requesting transparency from the port of Portland about ICE activity at Hillsborough Airport, and codifying county sanctuary laws, much like Portland did last week. We don't want to hear about what you can't do in this moment. We cannot fly meekly under the radar anymore. This is affecting our community now. Taking the action necessary to mitigate this crisis is a matter of life and death.
Thank you.
Next, who we have is Tammy Carpenter and Jorge Cisneros.
Well, thank you again. Can I start now?
Tammy Carpenter first, please.
Go ahead and watch the game, huh?
Good evening, Chair Harrington, County Commissioners. My name is Tammy Carpenter, and I am a Beaverton School Board member, speaking tonight on my own behalf. Many of us were here a few months ago. I recognize a lot of folks. We begged you to not capitulate to the Trump administration. We felt strongly that complying in advance would not keep us safe. And here we are. The Trump administration is snatching people off the streets. They are taking parents of students in my school district. They're terrorizing our community. Your decision did not keep us safe. So what are you going to do now? How do you make this right? So to compound the fear of ICE, to exacerbate our community members, our neighbors going underground, we are about to experience a crisis of hunger. SNAP benefits end Friday night. What are you going to do? How are we going to address this? I would suggest that you direct county sheriffs to uphold the civil rights of every resident in Washington County. Have them follow around ICE, ensure that they have warrants, ensure that they're taking the person that they intended to take. I find it interesting, the timing right now, because we do have a sheriff's levy on the ballot for next Tuesday, if I'm not wrong. I do not support a sheriff's levy if the sheriffs are not standing up right now to protect us. So, yes, the sheriffs, you fund the sheriffs. You fund the sheriffs. You have some control. Direct them to protect us. We're begging you. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was here, I can't remember when, and we talk about the post-pandemic problems that we have with our students, and schools failing. I mentioned our gold age adults, you know, suffering from the post-pandemic, didn't know what to do. The numbers shows that hunger among older people is increasing. Concern about my community, diverse community, we hold local economies. I'm going to use this term "cheap labor" because that's what we work for, for cheap labor. We don't do nothing about it or help to solve the problem. We're worried about the whole economy is going to collapse. And it was collapsing prior to the ICE. The schools were failing prior to the ICE. So if you ask me, do I really want to stay here and buy my fingers just to go out or send my child to school knowing that he's going to learn anything? I'd rather just go back, period. If you can convince me to stay here and invest my money here, I'll stay. Otherwise, I'm going to pack my bags and leave to an economy that is booming. That's it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next, we have Anastasia Hernandez Vasquez and Stacy Reyes.
Ms. Vasquez? Go ahead.
Thank you for the chance to speak, Commissioners. We started with the Pledge of the Legions that states "One nation..."
Ms. Vasquez? Just one moment. I want everyone to have the opportunity to hear you. Thank you very much. Go ahead.
All right. We started with the Pledge of the Legions that states "One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all." I would like to call on this discrepancy. We are under attack. We are divided. We are not in touch with God. Current days, the SS officers are taking commands from a figurehead that doesn't even know what the Constitution says, who's a child of immigrants, and is targeting the hard-working, honest, and most vulnerable in our community. Please call this what it is. It's an emergency. And please protect those who cannot protect themselves and our next generations, who will have irreparable consequences due to these actions, and all of us who are horrified by these actions happening in our community. Give us direction and strength by knowing that we are supported by our Commissioners, who are elected by our government and our communities, for the betterment of our communities. I beg you guys, I work at a high school. Our kids are scared. Even the little kids are scared. The families are scared. I just took five days of bereavement so that I could help families in our community after my son passed away, to help our people get to school, to get to work, to get groceries. You know, I should be mourning, but instead, I'm using my son's life as a legacy to support our communities. My son was half-Mexican, half-German. My family immigrated to this country because of the SS, because we have Jewish background, because we supported what was right. We had to flee here, and now we're looking to flee to another country because we're allowing this to happen in the beautiful land of America. This is not the American dream, and this is not the American that my family immigrated to. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Vance?
I'm here to stand with my colleague here, just as yesterday. I am a business owner, as I also work for Hillsborough School District. My kids are scared. All my kids, I have several kids who I've been supporting Anastasia, getting groceries, getting help, getting all the resources we can. We need some help. My employees, yesterday, were chased down on Highway 217, racial attack, major. And when I called our police officers to get help, they did nothing. They did nothing. I have a nasty voicemail that they left strictly for my employees and for my company. Nothing was done. We feel no protection. So I am trying to protect these kids, but I have no protection. None of us are protected, and that's for everybody to know. If you call our HPD and our sheriffs, they will do nothing. And I'm telling you because I just experienced it yesterday.
Thank you. Clerk Moss?
Next one we have up is...
Thank you, folks.
Blaine Solomon Pearson, and then we will go to the online ones.
Thank you.
Hello, Chair Harrington, Members of the Board. Thank you. A lot of people are talking about what's happening to them, and I want to put it on you and ask you. Have you had to have a conversation with your spouse and remind them, do you have your green card with you before you leave today? Have you had to sit your family down and game plan what to do in case they get snatched on their way to work? I've had that conversation. Have you had to think how you're going to explain to your children what happened because their grandparents or their aunt or their uncle got snatched? I've thought about that. Every night I go to bed worrying about members of my family, my wife's family, that they're going to get taken, because this county hasn't done anything, and it can do something. It can do something. Cities and counties across this country have done something, and we can do something to protect the people that live in this county and make the people in the most diverse county in the state feel protected and feel like their elected leadership does something for them. So I beg you to do anything in your power to try to stand up against what is happening. The statements you heard about people being snatched, rights being violated, that's not hyperbole. I'm a prosecutor. I deal with violations of rights and deciding if the police have followed the rule of law when they've arrested people. I deal with that on a daily basis. I'm watching videos of ICE disrespecting and violating people's constitutionally-protected rights on a daily basis, stopping people when they have no basis to, holding people there as long as they possibly can without any basis for doing so, rounding people up. And it is now, as someone mentioned earlier, legally permissible, according to the Supreme Court, to racially profile. So we need to do something to stand up and use our resources in this county to stand up against this injustice. Thank you.
Thank you, folks.
Right. Madam Chair, we have the online Nadia Hassan. Nadia, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, you can. Please go ahead for up to two minutes.
Thank you. Dear Washington County Board of Commissioners, my name is Nadia Hassan, but I come to you just as Nadia, a mother of three children, daughter of immigrant parents, and former high school teacher in Beaverton Schools. I'm horrified at the drastic uptick in ICE in our community. Last week, I was made aware of several confirmed ICE reports near our Beaverton schools and by our churches and mosques. These masked individuals with no identification marked with words like "ICE" and "police" are not agents of the law. They do not show warrants in their arrests, and they have escalated their violence in our community. In Beaverton, they have broken several car windows to abduct our residents. They are secret police with no understanding of the law, coming at all hours of the day and kidnapping people in our community. There is no due process. In multiple cases, they are not producing warrants, and they are ignoring and disregarding our local and state laws. I urge you to consider releasing funds for families who are being impacted. In the last two weeks alone, I know a handful of fathers who have been taken in the greater Beaverton area. The impact of this action on those families spans across rental assistance to trauma for children who are left without fathers witnessing their families being torn apart. Anne Frank once said, "Terrible things are happening outside. Poor helpless people are being dragged out of their homes. Families are torn apart. Men, women, and children are separated. Children come home from school to find their parents have disappeared." We stand in a moment where we can do something and say something as this happens in our community. Please join me in this moment to say Oregonians belong here by codifying sanctuary laws in our county, releasing funds for the community, calling for a state of emergency, and demanding every level of government come together to hold ICE accountable for their illegal actions in our county. Please help us protect the place that we call home. Thank you.
Thank you. Who's next? Clerk Moss? Clerk Moss, who's next?
Next is Olivia Clare. Olivia, can you hear us?
Thank you. This is Olivia, city councillor, Olivia of Karen Hillsborough, and I'm reaching out to you today to please consider some responses that you can put forward in the name of resources for people who are unable to pay their rent, afraid to go to their doctor's appointments, getting arrested by ICE when they exit your courtrooms. And I, you know, it was heartbreaking to hear other people talk about the lack of safety that they are feeling in this county, not just from ICE. So I really am asking you to think about what resources you can put forward. And many of you, I've had conversations with, had opportunity to talk about community and supporting community and who they are and what they mean. So I really hope that you can consider what's happening, and it's an imbalance because my community is being targeted. And I know people who are afraid of going outside. I know US-born Mexicans right now who were afraid to go out without their ID. So why is this okay? We should not be allowing this to happen, and we have the right to say something about the aggressive and violent way that ICE is taking hold of this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. The last two we have is Barry Johnson Smith or Evelyn Matthew. Mr. Smith, can you raise your hand if you're online there? There you are. All right. Go ahead, Mr. Smith.
Can you hear me?
We can.
All right, cool. Good afternoon, County Commissioners. My name is Barry Johnson Smith, and I am community member and co-chair of the advisory council on racial equity. I'm just here to discuss what people have been talking about today on the recent surge of ICE activity. But everyone gave testimony today. I have been vouching to her to be true. I've been doing mutual aid work the past couple of weeks, but it affected family members, and there is a climate of fear among people in Washington County. People are afraid to go to work, take their children to school, or even lose their homes. Many families are struggling because their main provider has been abducted and don't know how to feed or pay for rent. I've talked to community-based organizations, many of them relying on county funding, who have told me they can't carry out their mission because people are afraid to engage with them or attend the organization because they're afraid of getting abducted. This is not business as usual. When a significant portion of our population is afraid to participate in daily life, that becomes a public safety emergency. I'm asking for your partnership and leadership in addressing this specifically, unlocked and direct emergency funds to support CBOs assisting families impacted by ICE activity, advocate for accountability for ICE when their operations create danger or violate laws, and a work community leader to develop solutions that keep all residents safe and supported. We understand there are legal limits to how a county can engage with ICE. The ICE is not above all. And you do have jurisdiction to protect and support community residents. Like I said before, we are not actually afraid of challenges alone. Community members and organizations are ready to work alongside you to create viable solutions. What's happening is horrifying and is requiring immediate action. We cannot afford to wait any longer. I look forward to working with you to ensure that all members of our county feel safe, valued, and protected. And also, I want to let Commissioner Snyder and Tris know, and the residents, and the county officials. I will go with Aker. I will be following up with you on Monday to hear your response about my testimony. Thank you.
And the last person we have is Evelyn Matthew. Evelyn, can you hear us?
Who is that again?
Evelyn Matthew.
Thank you.
All right, go ahead, Evelyn.
Okay. Thank you so much, Commissioners, for being here. Commissioner Tris, I live in your area, and I'm a mom of three kids. I have an elementary schooler, a middle schooler, and a high schooler. People in my kids' communities are very afraid to go to school or to be taken after school. My son plays baseball. One of his good teammates is too afraid to even go to baseball practice. I know you're a mom and a grandma, and I just, it breaks my heart to think that the things that our kids identify as who they are and what gives them joy and purpose are being taken away because they are too afraid to even attend our schools. I'm imagining a world right now where we can see the type of safety that our public safety officers can provide, where our Beaverton police officers, our Washington County sheriffs, are there witnessing what's happening with ICE and holding ICE accountable. I spoke with a Beaverton police officer, and he said he thought they were just taking people with criminal records. This is a lie. We are not seeing that. And no matter what record someone has, in our country, we have to give them due process, and there is no substitute for human rights. So please, I ask you to do whatever you can. I was outside of Sunset High School on Cornell Road with another mom who witnessed the ICE kidnapping happening there. I am a Christian mom. It felt like the rapture had come. There was a work truck by the side of the road with its lights flashing and no one in it because that person who was on his way to work with ladders on top of his truck was simply taken while others drove by trying to get their kids to school. So please, Commissioner Tris and other Commissioners, I ask that you do whatever you can to help protect our students and our families.
Thank you, Ms. Matthew.
And that concludes the first round testimony. Madam Chair.
Thank you, Clerk Moss. Next, we'll move on to tonight's consent agenda, which consists of four different items: two items from Finance, one item from County Council, and one item from Human Resources. What are the wishes of the Commission?
Second.
We have a motion and a second to adopt today's consent agenda. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously, five to zero. Next, we're going to move on to presentations. And this, we have one, and it comes from Clean Water Services for two different types of recognition. Over to our interim CEO, general manager, Rick Shanley.
Thanks so much, and thanks for your time this evening. So, yeah, we have a presentation in two parts tonight. Both of them stem from the WEFTEC conference that we went to last month. That is the Water Environment Federation Technical Exhibition Conference. It's got about 20,000 attendees, so this is a major event for our industry. And I'm just super happy and proud. The entire district is proud of the awards that we received there. So to begin with, Skylar Edmondson will be presenting on our Operations Challenge team. There was an article recently in the Wall Street Journal that calls this "the Super Bowl of wastewater events." So this is a big deal. And then next, we'll hear from Joe Gahl and Karen DeBaker about our Utility of the Future Award for partnering and engagement. So I don't want to say a whole lot. I want to turn it over to those folks. Before I do, I'd also like to thank Director Snyder and Willie for attending WEFTEC, investing the time, and learning about Clean Water Services and supporting our folks that were there in attendance.
Why don't we just take a pause for a moment while some of tonight's audience quietly leaves? Thank you.
Sounds good.
And the doors are closed now. Please go ahead.
All right. Great. I'll just give one suggestion, that if we could take one photo for both groups at the end of both presentations, and with that, I'll turn it over to Skylar.
Hi there, Board. Skylar Edmondson, I am a senior wastewater treatment operator at the Rock Creek Facility for Clean Water Services. I've been doing that, or in that role, for about a year and a half now. And in my mind, it all kind of stems a little bit off of this Operations Challenge group that I've joined a couple of years back. So just want to discuss a little bit about what it is and a little bit of details on that. So at first, if I could just introduce my teams, I brought them today as well. I think it'd be really neat if I can get them to stand up and just say who they are real quick and what they do.
Well, and we will definitely want...
Should we wait for that?
Why don't we do that when we're all up here for a photo, and we'll pass the mic out then?
Hey, I like it, Catherine. That sounds great. Okay, so what is Waste, or what is Operations Challenge? Some people call it "the Super Bowl of wastewater." Some people call it "the greatest professional development tool known to the wastewater industry." It's what I like to call, a lot of other people call it "the wastewater Olympics." Got a lot of medals from the last couple of years that I've been involved. I've been involved in it for three years now. This year, I joyously accepted the coaching position. So I didn't get to compete as much, but I got to help with the team, get them sorted, and get them going to the competitions, and we did really well again this year. So very excited about that. I was, yeah. Tried to be. So yep, I'm sure that's why I'm up here speaking for us now, too. So, yep. So Clean Water Services has been involved in Operations Challenge since 1989. A lot of awards, a lot of recognition from the past, and COVID kind of cut it out for a couple of years, and we've actually joined back, and we came back strong. The first year, my hoopla-trupa team took first place in our division. The second year, we went back, and we took third place in the next division up. This year, our team went to the PNCWA, the regional competition, and for the first time I've been involved, swept the entire competition, won first place in all events and overall. And then we went to WEFTEC, and we're in Division Three because we have some new individuals on the team, and we ended up getting third place with a couple of first-place victories in some events and a lot of other placements. So it was a really fun time. So in general, hundreds of teams across the nation compete in regional competitions just to be able to go to this international competition. Really, it's a national competition, but there's also some other teams from different parts of the world. We've seen a Brazilian team, many teams from Europe, a lot of South American teams, and a lot of other teams join us and kind of collaborate and learn some of these things together. So really fun networking opportunity for us. This year, there was 57 teams competing. It's been the most ever. There was 25 teams in our division, Division Three, this year, and again, third overall. And there's five events in the Operations Challenge competition. The first event is Process, and that is a test, a 30-minute test that all four individuals on the team have to take together. There's a computer simulation, a 50-question multiple-choice test on the computer, and then the three other individuals, or depending on how they set it up, have to take a written test answering many questions. We did pretty darn well in that competition this year, like I thought we would. Very good studying team. Maintenance, that's where we are pulling a live pump out of a wet well after powering it down, putting it on a table, taking the foot impeller nozzle off, and then replacing it with new parts and pieces, putting it back in the wet well, and starting it back up. Laboratory, it's as fun as it sounds. This year, we did, what was it, phosphorus and chlorine residuals, or testing in general. A little bit different this year, so a lot of new things to learn. But luckily, we had a laboratory specialist on our team, really helpful, got us squared away, and we did really well in that one as well. Collections, one of the funnest ones, the shortest ones, but the funnest ones. Should be about a minute and a half to two and a half minutes, depending on what kind of team you are. And it's quick, fast-paced, cutting pipes, replacing pipe, and pressure testing at the end to ensure that you have no leaks. We did the best time at WEFTEC this year, and we ended up leaking a little bit. But hey, still a great job by my team to do that. I thought it was awesome. Safety. There's a person that went down into a manhole, was doing some work, and ended up falling, getting hurt, whatever it may be. Our job is to get down there, rescue the individual, pull them out, and then go back down and finish the job. Really unrealistic, probably in real world wouldn't go back down and finish the job. We take care of all the other stuff up top, you know, take care of the individual. But it's a competition, so they got to make a little bit of a game out of it. In general, that's the five events across the board. We did an awesome job. And just in general, I want to get into what we had to do to kind of prepare. This year was a new team, so we actually interviewed individuals to be a part of the team. We picked three new members of the team this year with two returners, me being the coach, and then one of the team members on the other, the River Rangers team last year, was the captain of our team this year. We started in May, getting everything kind of set up, and then from June through October, it was practice. Upwards of two times a week, the first month or so, we usually do about a two-hour practice. And then, once we get closer to competitions, we increase that to about three hours of practice two times a week. And that's, I think, what really gives us the upper hand on beating, you know, upwards of 40-plus other teams across the nation and world. So it's the time, right? You got to get the best time in the events, and the only way to do that is to take time to get there, right? So that's a big deal. Let's see here. Yeah, on top of this as well, all the team members on the team are also expected to be able to perform their normal duties at work. So really asking a lot from the individuals on this team. And what we've noticed is people really growing from that, being able to see that they can do that and do this as well, right? Add all this extra work on top of it. And it really kind of empowers people to kind of move forward within our company as well. well. So a really huge benefit in my mind. Let's see here. And I'll get into the impacts of employees in the organization. So I'll just throw out a couple of bullet points. I think it's kind of important just to at least touch on them here real quick. So collaborating across diverse work groups. We try to pick individuals from different work groups that you don't normally see on an everyday basis. I work inside of a facility that's fenced off, right close to the public unless tours come in and whatnot. We don't get to go outside that often when we're working inside the plant. So getting to go and meet these other individuals that have probably been working there for 10, 15, 20 years, some less might be, but you never actually get to see them. I just met Karen today. So in general, right, it's really nice to be able to network and get out there and meet other people within the district and really understand the different roles and understand how vast and how big this company is and all the work that we're doing within our county. Personal and professional development. Every single individual on the teams the last two years has been promoted in some way, either within their trade or within the higher positions within the company. Huge professional development tool. You get career-specific knowledge sharing, right? You're networking with other individuals from different municipalities. For instance, I got really close with the City of Bend employees, the operators, the maintenance individuals. They have a, they have a process that they started a year or two ago that we were about to pilot. So I got the ability to call them, ask them legitimate questions, people on the ground that actually work on this stuff and get legitimate information on if it's worthwhile. And not just engineers coming in saying it's going to work, it's people, boots on the ground, that are telling me, hey, this is some, this is some great stuff, or hey, this is something to look out for, right? Really awesome. Hands-on certification education. I know personally, this was one of the greatest knowledge-sharing, knowledge-growing opportunities I've ever had in my life. I've been working really hard to get my operator, Treatment Operator Four Certification, the highest one in the state for wastewater treatment. Took it twice before I joined this group. I get passionate because it was a long time of my life, so I'm sorry. I know it might not be as important as other things, but it's taken up a lot of my life, so. Give me a second here. Took me three times. I joined this team, and I got a lot of help, a lot of knowledge and experience and things I haven't had before. So it's just really exciting. Got to pass the test, and I did a pretty good job at it, too. So it was awesome. Excuse me. Leadership and engagement. Like I said, we're kind of growing leaders within the group. You go back, you tell people about what we've experienced, you get them excited about being able to, you know, the opportunity for the future. And also get, you know, a little cheering team back home, right? And I think it also shows, right? You're able to do your work and then come and do this extra work. It kind of puts a little more effort into your coworkers as well to kind of step up and help out and then realize that they can do more as well. Enhanced communication between departments. I mean, it was a no-brainer. Like I said, I don't get to see everybody all the time. Laboratory comes in, they grab samples, and they leave, right? You don't get to see them that often. I'm able to work directly with them. I've now started having my operators, right? It's a big part of our testing, having my operators go and learn from the laboratory, learn the testing procedures, understand all the protocols. It's been amazing. They've come and shadowed us, come and worked with us for a day, realized what operators do at a wastewater treatment plant. It's been awesome. And then time management. Hopefully, I'm within time in this speech, so don't judge me for this one, but honestly, time management, like I said, you're juggling all of these multiple things. You know, your normal job, your home life, the extra competition, the extra work that you have to do for it, the traveling to go do some of these things. I mean, it is quite a difficult task to keep all together. And I really, it's shown through all my teammates and the ability for them to grow up and move up, that it's a huge time management skill builder as well. So we've had amazing friends, or we have made amazing friends and pathways through departments that before seemed difficult to obtain. Together, our group has helped create communication pathways that have aided in multiple department protocols, in turn enhancing efficiency in certain tasks and allowing for an increased ability to collaborate between departments. Let's all watch a video from this year's team. It's our Communications and Community Engagement Department put it together for us. Thought they did an amazing job, so I'd all love you guys to check this out. Awesome video. Thanks for listening.
Well, let's cue it up.
Let's go, guys. Let's go, let's go.
I was interested in joining to gain more experience about what else is happening at Clean Water Services and expand my skill set and understanding of our work. Know other people at CWS, what they work on, what some of the other types of work we do, be part of a team.
What this means to me and why I wanted to join is just learning and growing in my career and collaborating with the different teams we have, and hopefully we win.
I've been in the district for over 12 years. I've always seen them come argue that the Ops Challenge guy has been bad and the relationships they've built over the years. I've always wanted to try that, so. So I wanted to be a part of is the relationships and being part of a bigger team.
Every year, the River Rangers or other teams kind of got some sort of a theme, and I think we were talking about bright colors, and then we were like, what about Power Rangers? That would be fun. And then we all kind of got on it and figured out what our colors were and...
And we can have matching car hats to go with it, so it looks good.
Hustle, guys, hustle.
Yes.
This is my first year on Ops Challenge. I'm very excited.
This is my first year with the Ops Challenge team. I'm loving it.
This is my first year doing Operations Challenge.
I am the coach of this year's Operations Challenge Team, and I've been on the team, I guess this will be my third year. So I competed the last two years, and this year I get to coach them. Super excited. Thank you guys, see you today. Got some awesome talent on the team this year, and just excited to see what comes of it, so.
This has been great to connect with other facilities across Oregon. One thing, you know, that stood out to me is just how well we've worked with Clean Water Services and how much they've helped us, whether it be through Ops Challenge, coming down here to practice, or operationally. So, you know, we just appreciate the opportunity to come down here, compete with these guys, and just collaborate and network.
All right, guys. Let's go. Right there, guys, right there. Hustle, 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 hustle. Get them, get them, get them. Let's go, let's go, let's go.
Yes.
It's exciting. We bring a lot of, a lot of fun and enjoyment and loudness. It's usually just me, but the team's going to get there, too. So we're working on it. Thank you, guys.
Great. Well, we're going to look forward to having each of you introduce yourselves when we come up here and take a photograph. Thank you very much for joining us tonight. Skylar, well done. I don't envy Joe and Karen having to follow your act. There you go.
Sorry, sorry, guys.
That's okay. They don't mind the challenge. Take it away.
Jerry, you took the words right out of my mouth. How do you top that? Thank you. It's easy to be energized, knowing how passionate these folks are each year and how well we do this. And Communications and Community Engagement Team was very happy to put that video together, and you're going to see that video out on social media as we're going to get the information out to the public in terms of some of this success we've had. Another highlight at WEFTEC that we're going to touch on, we don't have a video and things like that, but it's equally very important. It's something called the Utility of the Future Award or Recognition. And as the Board knows, we've received this a number of times. I'm going to pass it to Karen, who's going to go through this year's award. It's important that Karen and her team are recognized in their role in this. So usually, the application is put together by someone on her team, the written application, and a lot of coordination across the organization. This year, it was Ellen Gordon, who is here and did a phenomenal job. Ellen, thank you. And the category this year is Partnering and Engagement. Obviously, for Communications and Community Engagement, right up our alley. So we're really happy this year that that's the recognition that we are receiving in this category. So Karen, I'll let you go from there.
Thank you, Joe. One of the biggest things that, you know, we want to say if we've heard all this, one of the things is people ask me why I stay and why I've been here for 25 years, and it's because of folks like Skylar, so even though I just met you today. So that's, that passion is why. But the, the whole thing that we do at Clean Water Services, we, we always say it's not just about checking a box, not just to meet our permit, it's because we're, we're, we're working for the community and because our slow and sensitive Tualaton River demands it. So, so really quickly, the Utility of the Future Today recognition is a partnership of major water sector organizations, Water Environment Federation, National Association of Clean Water Agencies, Water Reuse Association, Water Research Foundation, U.S. Water Alliance. And it recognizes organizations like ours, water resources, utilities, facilities around the country transforming operations. And it's about innovation, it's about technology and culture change. And in summary, key aspects worthy honorees is that they're promoting resource recovery, water, energy, and nutrients. They're encouraging community engagement, they're fostering a culture of innovation, or the organizations have to foster a culture of innovation. And there's an expectation that we share these best practices. And we have a culture at CWS of, we always say we're learning every day, lifelong learners, and we're required to share that knowledge back out with the water sector just as much as we're required to train and be experts in what we do, again, because our river demands it. So award focus areas, more than 200 utilities have been recognized since 2016. Our organization's been recognized nine times, and in each of the focus area at least once: Energy Efficiency, Energy Generation Recovery, Nutrient Reduction, Materials Recovery, Water Reuse, Watershed Stewardship, Beneficial Biodeults Solids Reuse, and Partnering Engagement, which is what I'm here to talk to you about today. And I'm so fortunate that while we have the technical expertise at Clean Water Services, I'm honored that it also honors excellence in human relationships and partnerships. And that's what we'll talk about right now. Right here is just a sampling of the transformative partnerships, not just transactional. And the reason that we do it is we leverage the expertise within Clean Water Services because that is a way to maximize the impact of ratepayers' investments. So again, we have intergovernmental agreements with our partner cities, we call them co-implementers for watershed health. The Emerald Ash Borer Response, this beautiful little beetle, but we need to mitigate the effects that it's having on our ash trees, which are core to shade our streams and meet our temperature requirements. So there's a local, state, and federal partnership that goes on to manage that. PFOS, what we like to call, what we don't call, but they're also called Forever Chemicals. I'm sure you've heard about them. We have Scott Mansell from our Research and Innovation Group, and Amanda McGary here, who've worked on this and are working on this. And we have a huge partnership with Oregon State University to understand the effects. We have partnerships with our industries because we want to make sure we know what's coming to the treatment facilities to reduce that load, and then to work with them on mitigation and management plans. Fish Eggs to Fry Program, it's working with, last year, I believe it was roughly 900 students. And that is a huge partnership of so many organizations to do that. And we can't do that alone, and that is having the salmon, we raise them, and then re-release them, and teaching kids about the environment. Community Engagement Agreements, leveraging the expertise we have inside, working with partners to do education outreach, to manage our stewardship and education requirements. Tree for All, you've heard about that. Over the last 20 years, 150 million miles of streams restored with partners, and tens of millions of trees that have been, and shrubs that have been planted. And that takes work, and that's a partnership. And then obviously, finally, not least important, Career Connected Learning. We have a big program with the Portland STEM Partnership where we train the trainers, so to speak, where we have externships for teachers, so we actually teach them how to teach the kids about water resources, incorporate into their curriculum, and then create those future water workers. So with that, a big thank you.
Any questions on the Utility of the Future Award before we take a picture?
No questions. I think we're pretty darn proud of the work that all of the over 400 employees of Clean Water Services do to protect our public health and that of the Tualaton River, and support our quality of life and businesses here. But before we join you on the floor, Commissioners.
I just want to say Commissioner Snyder and I really enjoyed watching the team perform at WEFTEC. We particularly enjoyed Skylar and his cheerleading, and, but the, the team was, the team was really, really good, and it was fun to watch them. So I just want to say congratulations, and I know Commissioner Snyder's got a couple of comments he'd like to make, too. This is his first WEFTEC, and it was impressive, so, yeah.
Well, thank you, and thank you for commending them on our behalf. I really enjoyed my time and learning, frankly, at WEFTEC. You all were great hosts, both on the technical side and, and teaching about the technology and what we were, what we were looking at, and then also our team competing. I think I might have recognized myself or my voice screaming on one of the videos. Sorry about that. But it was exciting, and it's impressive to see how we compete. But I think, you know, while that's all fun, the, as you shared your journey when we were in Chicago for this event, that the, both learning and development that you got out of it, and the education and support that it gave you to finally achieve one of your career goals, and what that means to everybody else that are coming up through the program, and what it means for leadership development was really impressive. So that's the ultimate reason why I think we do these, you know, these types of activities. It's fun to compete, but there's a lot more that the organization and the individuals involved in the organization get out of this. And so it was my honor to be able to attend, and you all performed very impressively.
Commissioner Treese. Thank you, Chair. I've had the opportunity in the past to attend WEFTEC and been aware of the competition, and it's, it really is very, very cool. I just wanted to take a minute and say to the audience that's here and those who may be listening on the phone, this is the excellence that Clean Water Services brings to each and every one of our customers as well. So all of the, the competition that you see in the, in the videos, the camaraderie that's built, that translates directly to field work and field activity. So I just want to make sure that that message gets across. It's, it's an excellent way to learn, but the real trick is how you all implement, and you do a fabulous job. So thank you for your work. Thank you. Commissioner Fai.
Thank you, Chair. Great presentation, Skylar. Thank you for sharing your story with us tonight and showing up with your authentic self. I really appreciated hearing your story and your journey. And if this career, you're done with it, you have a public speaking, and you're, you're really a great speaker, and you did a phenomenal job. Sorry, Joe. Try, try harder next time.
Like I said, exactly.
Not you, you're great. You're the communication.
I get to learn from them, too. So it's, it's all, all the team.
Now they have a role model to follow.
Skylar.
Thank you.
So if all of you who've joined us tonight from Clean Water Services could join us Well, it's really important to us on the Board of Directors to support the great work of our Clean Water Services employees, and we appreciate all of you each and every day. I tell you, I would not want to have to do this work under the pressure of conditions in the field, let alone in a fun competition. Thank you, Skylar. Where'd you go? There he is, for bringing all this to life for us. And Rick, could you please take it from here and have each member of your team introduce themselves?
Okay, yeah, I'm happy to do that. I'm going to start with Chris, and then if you just want to say how I get by with the district, what you do for us, and, and your name, that'd be great.
I'm Chris Karzner. I've been with the district for almost 17 years. I'm the Electrical Instrumentation Supervisor for our Rock Creek Facility.
My name's Kevin Wegener. I've been with Clean Water Services for just about 18 years. I'm an operations analyst that looks after all the solids that you give us.
Xander Willis. I work at all the facilities. I do the startups. So every capital project we do, I push all the buttons and make sure it all works so the operators have a good system.
My name is Amanda McGary. I've been with the district for just about four years now, and I'm an Environmental Services Specialist, so I do our PFS work and industrial apartmenting and compliance.
I'm Rita Cooper. I've been here almost two years now. I'm an engineer in the Regulatory Affairs Department and the Green Ranger on the River Rangers.
Oh, you guys know me. I cried on video, that guy.
My name's Shandor Bruski. I've been with Clean Water Services for about two years, and I was the Pink Ranger on the team.
Me? Hi, I'm Ellen Gordon.
Hi, I'm Ellen Gordon. I work for Communications and Community Engagement. I cut the video, so that was exciting to have that play here. And I also applied for the UOTF Award on behalf of Clean Water Services. So double whammy for me, huh?
And the name of the city event team was?
Wizards of Laws.
Laws.
Waste activated sludge.
Yes. Thank you. Would you like to introduce yourself?
A microphone. Good evening. Yeah, the power. Good evening. My name is Elizabeth Edwards. I'm the Chief of Staff here at Clean Water Services and I get to work with and represent all these fine folks.
Karen, you've already introduced. I know, I'm coming down the line.
Scott Mansell, I'm the Research and Innovation Division Manager and do a lot of RPAS work on the technical side.
Well, we are all proud of you. So, Maida is our great picture taker. Do we need to like bring the banner over or anything like that?
I don't think so. I think you all are actually.
Why are you standing in front of what are these really talking about?
One, two, three. The Power Rangers.
Power Rangers.
I'm chatting with Go Go River Rangers.
Okay. Go Go River Rangers.
Okay, I think I got a couple.
Excellent. Fly that flag proudly. Thank you for joining us, yes. Thank you again, Clean Water Services folks for joining us this evening. Next, we're going to move on to proclamations. We have one proclamation this evening. And that comes to us. Whoops, here we go. We are here to proclaim November 2025 as Native American and Alaskan Nativ-- excuse me, Alaskan Native Heritage Month. Clerk Moss, do we have anyone from staff who's joining us this evening?
Yes, we have Aika Fallstrom to introduce this item with staff.
Terrific, welcome. Come right on up. As you can see, we're a very welcoming crowd.
Good evening, Chair Harrington and Commissioners. My name is Aika Fallstrom and I am on the Community Engagement Team with the Office of Access and Opportunity. I'm honored to introduce this proclamation as well as offer a few introductory remarks. Washington County Cultural Heritage Celebrations and Resource Pages are an important starting point for our collective organizational engagement and learning about the community we serve and the myriad of lived experiences across the spectrum. They offer an opportunity to enter and strengthen relationships with staff and community who recognize the important role that Native American and Alaskan Native Heritage Month offers. The Native and Indigenous communities, like all cultures, is not monolithic. It encompasses a range of diverse lived experiences, contributions, and opinions. Even with the wide range of Native American and Alaskan Native experiences, the one thing we know to be true is Native and Indigenous history is American history. It is essential to understanding the nation's full story and how Indigenous heritage is an integral and foundational part of this story. Thank you to all of the Planning Committee members in partnership with Clean Water Services for their hard work and dedication to help educate the community. And with that, I would like to turn it over to staff member Tricia McCauley from Health and Human Services to read the proclamation.
Good evening. Good evening. Whereas we acknowledge the people on whose land we live, the Falati Kalapuans, also known as the Toowalatin Band of Kalapuans, the first inhabitants of Washington County, we are grateful for the land we're on. It's Kalapuan land. Whereas in honoring the culture's traditions and acknowledgements of Indigenous people, excuse me, accomplishments of Indigenous people that have shaped our country, we also acknowledge our nation's history of colonialism that has inflicted discrimination, deprivation, violence, and genocide upon Indigenous people. Whereas the area currently known as Washington County, Oregon rests on land that was first inhabited by the Falati Kalapuans, also known as the Toowalatin People, who flourished for thousands of years with their own organized forms of medicine, language, communities, and an economy. Whereas then settlers began arriving, they would become Washington County in 1830s to take the land from the Falati. That was not ceded nor paid for in 1855, under the Willamette Valley Treaty, which was signed and ratified with many other tribes. The treaty was ceded all of their lands to the United States in exchange for permanent reservation, supplies, and services. Whereas the Falati were forcibly removed from their homeland to the Grand Ron Indian Reservation in 1856, where they were mistreated by the United States government, the Indian agents being denied land, adequate food, medicines, services for nearly 20 years, causing many Native people to live in poverty and to suffer untimely deaths. Whereas the first off reservation Indian boarding school was in Oregon, it was actually in Forest Grove in 1880. It was in operation until 1885 and then moved down to Salem. Many Native students from area reservations were forcibly removed from their families and sent them there to assimilate to white culture deliberately to disconnect from their Native culture and language. Many were never reunited with their families. This disconnection from their community, identity, and culture continues to persist through generational trauma. Whereas the Grand Ron Indian Reservation was terminated by the United States Congress in 1954 in the Public Life Law 588, causing the displacement and disenfranchisement of thousands of Native peoples of Oregon, including the Falati peoples who were forced to leave their former reservation, causing further loss of Native languages and culture. Whereas the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron Community of Oregon was reestablished as recognized Native Nation in 1983 under Public Law 98165, with the Falati people as members beginning the process of restoring the tribe, community, and cultures. The tribal nation and the Falati people endure to this day as members of the Confederated Tribes of the Grand Ron. Having survived catastrophic diseases, loss of their ancestral lands, forced relocation to a reservation, family separations through the removal of children to boarding schools, and termination. And whereas after overcoming numerous setbacks over the years to regain treaty-acquired land and federal recognition as a sovereign nation, the Confederated Tribes to the Grand Ron established a successful government to serve the needs of their members and also generously support the advancement of underserved communities throughout the Northwest Oregon, including receiving Chinnyukwawa language, developing the Tomwata Village on their ancestral land up the Willamette Falls, and cultivating and reseeding native plants and first foods across the state. Whereas we seek to repair the trauma of the past oppression and broken trust, both locally and regionally, by lifting up Indigenous cultures and voices, striving together to build a future of shared hope and promise for all. Therefore, be resolved on this 28th day of October 2025, the Washington County Board of Commissioners, November 2025, as Native American and Alaskan Heritage Month, a time to celebrate the rich and diverse cultures of Indigenous people, to raise awareness about our shared history and acknowledge the important contributions that Native Americans have made to our community and our nation. I'm giving a voice to the voiceless. Thank you.
And I hope that you will join us when we take a photo to memorialize this opportunity. So Board members, do you have any questions or comments before I ask for a motion to proclaim November 2025 as Native American and Alaskan Native Heritage Month? Just to say thank you for being here tonight and thank you for reading the proclamation. And I really appreciate the gesture you just did. Thank you. Commissioners, do we have a motion? Some move. Sorry. Second. We have a motion and a second, a couple of times over. All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. And please, colleagues, if you would join me on the floor. If there are any other Washington County employees who would like to join us in recognizing this proclamation, please come. Have a good day. women who have been disappeared without resolution by their loved ones and community members. Next, we will move on to our action agenda. And we have a matter here to recognize the incredible work that has taken place by our Washington County Cooperative Library Services Team and all of our partners here in Washington County. And I'm going to go for the presumptive close in a few minutes. So any of our partner members who have joined us this evening, I hope that you will join us down on the floor to memorialize the to-come accomplishment. So Lisa Tattersall, welcome.
Thank you. Good evening, Chair and Board. I'm Lisa Tattersall, WCCLS Manager, and I'm here today to convey the recommended funding methodology and service boundaries for libraries. And I'm just going to go to the next slide. So, I think I am, there it goes. So for your board's reference and for the public listening today, I just wanted to share the board's touchpoints to date through this process. I also wanted to share that all of these links, along with additional data and details, are available on the WCCLS website at wccls.org/writingourfuture. I also wanted to review the board-supported process goals for the funding and governance work that we have been undertaking as a library cooperative for the last few years. Based on the cooperative feedback and your board's direction, staff brought back foundational process goals for your board's consideration, which included establishing a common understanding of the current service levels and costs, establishing base library service levels available for all county residents, evaluating and refining partner roles in providing that level of service to the community, identifying options for funding those services, and establishing metrics to allocate funding to partners operating libraries. Our partners gathered on October 16th this month to discuss your board's supported principles for library funding methodology and service boundaries and to indicate their support. All three of our nonprofit partners voted in favor of supporting the methodology, and that is the Aloha Community Library Association, the Cedar Mill &amp; Bethany Community Library Association, and the Garden Home and West Loop Community Library Association. Eight cities voted to support the process and those include, or the methodology, excuse me, and those include Banks, Cornelius, Forest Grove, Hillsborough, North Plains, Sherwood, Tigard, and Toowalatin. One city did not support, that was the city of Beaverton. And staff are bringing forward this funding methodology and service boundary recommendation to your board on behalf of the cooperative. A lot of this is review, and I'll just go over it briefly, but there's a lot of information from the October 2nd and September 23rd sessions. The service boundaries were drawn considering municipal boundaries, proximity to library location by travel time, which is a data-informed and best practice, an agreement between partners for areas that could be assigned to multiple libraries based on this methodology. We also resolved a few small areas where the voter precinct base unit conflicted with urban planning area agreements at the block level to reflect the county's strategic plan and the UPA map. The intergovernmental agreements will also include clarity on potential annexations in the future. And this paragraph was shared with the partners. We did make some slight tweaks, which I've noted in orange here just to make it clear that doesn't matter what kind of partner is involved. So we struck nonprofit and city and just opted for partners. And we also clarified that the funding would be reviewed along with the geography. And so I think those were good additions that our partners brought to the table for this. And then just for reference, here is a map of the recommended service boundaries. For the funding methodology principles, again, a lot more details on those earlier sessions that are linked there. Some of the agreements are that city partners can use funding allocations to offset their administrative costs. As long as base service levels are met, nonprofit partners will receive an allowance to support their facility costs. Should there be a net percentage increase in revenue from the local option levy and the general fund transfer, this percentage increase would be distributed to partners. The board may choose to determine a cap on that percentage increase as part of the forthcoming IGA conversations. That was something that your board talked about October 2nd. Should there be a net percentage decrease in revenue from the local option levy and the general fund transfer, this percentage decrease would be applied to partners. And a graphic outlining the base methodology is up next. And so we looked at, this chart just shows the relationship between population and funding. And so we have the service population of a particular library boundary, and then we multiplied that by a ratio of staff per population. And this ratio came from an analysis of cooperative library staffing data, which shows a linear correlation between FTE and population. We then looked at the average FTE costs for the cities in the cooperative, and those are noted with the little orange stars. And we applied that average FTE cost per the FTE that would be assigned by the population, and that gets us to the base funding allocation. We also looked at implementation strategies to help fit the model into the realities of our decades of service delivery partnership and legacy of funding transfers to support everyone in being successful. And so each partner will see at least a 5% increase on their fiscal year '25-'26 allocation amount in the next fiscal year, the first year of the levy cycle, fiscal year '26-'27. Your board supported a three-month fund balance target for WCCLS, which supports funding allocations. It also balances our cash flow considerations and also the county's responsibility for emergencies. And then we also adjusted the first-year allocations to support sustainable growth in service over time and the same rate of percentage increase for all partners across the levy cycle, should the revenue come in sufficiently. And this next slide I won't go over, but this shows the In this next slide, I won't go over, but this shows the resulting funding allocation for each partner, the dollar increase and the percentage increase. This is the proposed allocation amount, and it would represent each partner's base funding for the levy cycle through June 2031. And then, just to call back to your board's February work session where we talked about centralized collections, staff brought the cooperative recommendation to centralized collection management for the cooperative, which helps support the long-term sustainability and efficiency of library service for our communities. This will not be an easy transition to undertake, but as careful stewards of public resources, this is an important operational shift that's going to support our efficiency and library's ability to keep showing up for their community in the ways that they need. We know that county residents value the unique character of their local libraries, and they also value the convenience of a well-integrated countywide system. We understand that our library staff colleagues are highly skilled professionals. They have deep community ties, and they have crafted strong local collections. And so, we are looking forward to working with our colleagues on the collection development policy and strategy, ensuring that library staff will have mechanisms for giving input into the materials that are selected by WCCLS. And we have an RFP out right now. We're scoring, and we're doing that work in conjunction with our partner libraries. So, looking forward to beginning that process. So, I will move to the action item slide, and that is, does your board wish to adopt the partner recommendations for the library funding methodology and service boundaries? These would be incorporated into the intergovernmental agreements with partners, which we would start working on next. Thank you.
So, commission members, we have a proposal before us to adopt the partner recommendations for the library funding methodology and service boundaries. First, I would ask for a motion and a second, and then open the floor up to discussion and comments.
Move to accept this action item.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. I trust that each of my four district colleagues would like to make comments. So, who would like to kick us off?
I'll go ahead. Thank you, Chair. Both Commissioner Willie and I had the opportunity to work through this process with Ms. Tattersall, Ms. Kyle, and others. And I just, I am very respectful of the amount of work that went into this, the amount of adjustment that went into it, the hard decisions that were made, and the respectful manner in which everybody participated. This is really a very new approach for WCCLS. It's going to take adjustment. It's going to take a little time. And as we talked about during work sessions, with the intended review periodically to make sure that we're all on the right track moving forward. But I want to extend my appreciation to the staff and to the partners for the work that went into this. So, thank you very much. It was a big lift.
Yeah, I'd like to just follow on with that. It was a big lift, and our libraries are loved assets that we have in the county. And I just appreciate the hard work that everybody puts in to make sure that they provide the services and meet the community needs. And I think they do a great job, obviously, with the amount of checkouts and the amount of attendance in those libraries every day is an impressive statistic. So, thank you, Lisa, and your team for all the work that you did on this.
Lisa, thank you to you, the team, all the partners. This has been a monumental effort, and I'm appreciative that we've gotten to where we are today. I do want to just reinforce one point around the centralized collection, which I appreciate the information that you provided and pointed out. I just want to make sure that it's recognized that the process of engaging local community members and patrons and staff is going to be, from my perspective, an ongoing process that never ends. And I hope that for us to be successful with a centralized collection approach, I think that's critical. And so, I just want to emphasize that while also thanking you and the partners for all the effort. But I think that's a key point and one that we're going to need to really have ongoing attention to. So, thank you.
Thanks, Chair. I'll jump in here. Lisa, who would have thought, between the library levy and the public safety levy, that the library levy will be the most contentious or most levy that has been talked about? So, I honestly didn't see that coming, but this has been a robust process. I feel like everyone and anyone who wanted to contribute, whether positive or negative, or suggestion for an improvement, had that opportunity. I can comfortably sit here tonight and say that we really facilitated a collaborative and an inclusive process for everyone to voice their concern, to voice their celebration. So, I commend you and Tanya and all the leadership team for doing that. One thing that I recommend for you and Tanya to take back is, yes, City of Beaverton, send a letter through the city manager that was, you know, we're not in support of this. Let's not leave it there. Work, you know, work with the city manager, you and Tanya, to try to take what's in the letter and try to really address it. Because, you know, every city submitted three, two, or four points that they had concerns with. And it's not something that will make or break this process, but it's a great suggestion. So, I would recommend, not just the City of Beaverton, I'm a commissioner from District 1. So, City of Beaverton, you know, about 95% or so, City of Beaverton is in District 1, is what we always say in District 1. But every city had a really good two or three points that they were emphasizing. And I want to encourage you all to have that meeting with the city managers and the city staff that submitted those letters and the nonprofits as well, right? The nonprofits as well, the libraries submitted letters that also said, yes, and. So, and I would like to see the Washington County staff address that. And you have my commitment as an elected to work with the elected bodies who had some terpidations about supporting this levy and to try to work that relationship and try to see where we can, you know, not a compromise, but where we can meet each other. But this has been a great journey and good job. And I want to thank all the partners. And I want you all to know, including the Aloha Library, that I read all of your letters, and I hear all the points you're emphasizing. And we'll see what I can do on my end. And I hear the call-out you all made to try to work with the whole board. So, kudos.
All right. Thank you, district colleagues, for your comments. Mine will be a little bit more extensive, I think. No sooner had the votes been counted back in May of 2020 for the renewal of the prior library levy that some of our partners approached me asking if the board would please reconsider the distribution formula for the levy cycle that the voters had just approved but had not actually started yet. And there was recognition, I think, back then, that the county had, the county board had adopted the equity resolution. And those values continue to stand as we have advanced our work for full access and opportunity. Then, our libraries, all of the partners, not only rose to the occasion, but exceeded, I think, the community needs during the COVID pandemic, providing access to materials and programs remotely in a way that supported people as humans and as community during a real unprecedented time. But we always knew there would be this next five-year cycle, and we couldn't wait too long. So, no sooner had we come out of the clutches of COVID, if I might call it that, that we set before ourselves an ambitious program that we worked with the partners on, starting with development of an RFP, a request for proposals, to have a consultant come in and work with all of us on a proposal. So, I want to thank Marina and company for stepping forward and being very much a part of this program. We heard here again tonight how this was an ambitious program as laid out by the process goals. And I sit here today incredibly grateful and appreciative for the involvement of each and every one of our partners in this tremendous engagement. This is, after all, a formal cooperative. We do not have a cooperative of this nature anywhere in our county government. This is a formal cooperative to support public libraries throughout Washington County. And as District Commissioner Willie noted, our community loves libraries, loves public libraries, and the fact that they provide access and opportunity for all. You outlined it, summarized it again very well tonight, that this program include defining a modern base level of services for each library rooted in access and opportunity, updated the service boundaries and the funding allocation methodology, including a sustainable ramp-up, as well as multiple implementation strategies. I want to say once again, I am grateful, not only to you, Lisa, but also to each and every one of the partners, city partners as well as our nonprofit partners. But I also want to thank you, Lisa Tattersall, for not only excelling as a WCCLS manager and county employee extraordinaire, but all throughout this long process, being so objective, while also passionate about libraries, but objectively ensuring that each one of us, as a commissioner, but also as a full work group, understood the cooperative, the thoughts of the cooperative, but also for each partner of the cooperative. Really extraordinary work, and I thank you very much. And with that, I know that we have a motion and a second to adopt the partner recommendations for the library funding methodology and service boundaries, so that we can officially memorialize this milestone and get moving with the remaining milestones. So, all those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. Lisa and other library partners, if you would please join us for a photograph so we can memorialize the adoption of this milestone this evening. All righty. Thank you, folks. And next, we will move on to our second public communication opportunity for this evening. And this is an opportunity for members of our community to come and share their comment with us for up to five minutes in individual. Clerk Mas, who do we have signed up tonight?
The first two we have, Madam Chair, Antonio Verderusco. Lopez. And John Kingerly. Kingerly.
Whenever you're ready, ma'am.
I'm just going to let him walk up. My name is Antonia Lopez, and I'm a resident of Washington County. And I'd just like to let you guys know that this is the first time I ever participate in this manner. First or foremost, I'd like to say that public speaking is my own personal version of hell, but here I am today. While I thought that it was my own personal version of hell, but what is really my own personal version of hell is seeing what my community is going through. So, I am here tonight to get some clarification on, as our county leaders, how are you going to protect our community from the mass federal agents that are racially profiling and kidnapping citizens? Aside from your media releases reaffirming our sanctuary status and that you do not cooperate with ICE, what are you doing? Even if federal agents are acting in their official capacity, it does not protect them from criminal behavior. We are being racially profiled by mass people who refuse to identify themselves. They refuse to produce warrants, and are we supposed to just voluntarily go whomever says that they're a federal agent? We have already read about agents holding teenagers at gunpoint in Hillsborough, where, to my understanding, both Hillsborough Police and Washington County Sheriff's Office responded. What if any meetings that you guys have with county council, the attorneys that are at your disposal, to make policy? Before this happened, we knew this was coming. We had months to prepare. This is your jurisdiction. Are our local law enforcement willing and able to step in if we're being kidnapped by mass men refusing to identify themselves or produce a warrant while ignoring our assertions that we are citizens and that we have the proper documentation, the way Mr. Victor Perez and Francisco Miranda were taken? Federal agents are driving around without front license plates, switching plates in between cars to avoid being identified by the community. The Illinois State, sorry, I lost my spot. The Illinois Secretary of State's office created a hotline for such violations. At the bare minimum, are our law enforcement agencies willing to enforce traffic laws? You say you stand with our community. Does that mean stand by and watch us get assaulted and kidnapped? Do you not see the impact this is having on our community? Or do you not recognize it because you don't have to think twice before leaving your home like we do? As I stated at the beginning of this comment, I have never done this. In the past two weeks, I had a realization that I have a moral obligation to act. I have witnessed complete strangers come together to support our community. While I didn't sign up for this, you did. Our obligation is moral. Yours should be lawful. I am demanding, we are demanding that you enact a state of emergency. These were my comments that I prepared, but after this meeting, I can tell you that I am disappointed, disheartened, and actually disgusted. So I'm going to tell you this, if you guys did not take into account the human cost, I'm going to talk to you maybe in your language, dollars and cents. Just on 10th Avenue, the majority of the businesses are Latino-owned, so maybe you're not going to care about me and my people being dragged away. You're going to care about it when the county doesn't have money. We are the strongest economic group. I'm demanding action.
Okay, folks, we need to get on with the remainder of the meeting. Go ahead, sir.
My name is John Marshall Francis Kingery. My wife and I have lived, oh, sorry, thank you, Chair Harrington, Therese, Wiley, and Snyder. My wife and I have lived in the Bethany area for 34 years. My family immigrated to the United States in 1729 from Germany. Why? Because of religious persecution. We arrived here in the United States, they didn't understand our language, they didn't understand our faith because we were Anabaptists, and they did not understand the symbols that we used. So therefore, we were shunned. We were shunned, and that continued even after my great-great-grandfather fought in the Civil War. In 1919, we were bringing tubes for a church organ, and they said the Huns were going to be attacking. So that's a little bit of history. And as I said, I, last week, I was at Shute Park at the library, talking about what we as community can do. And I walked out, and I met someone from the UK. And basically what she said, she said, "This sounds like something from the 1930s, where people are just picked up and spirited away." And then also, you know what she said? She said, "Where are the children? Where are the children?" I said, "Yeah, you're right, because it was 3:15. The kids, you know, most likely would have been playing there, but they're not playing there because their families are in fear of being separated." And then when I heard about, you know, what was happening at Sunset High School, Vice Chair Therese, I live in the Bethany area, I'm very close to that area, and so to me, that's like, that's troubling, because that's, let's get past talking about county. This is a community, and everybody in the community has a responsibility. And then after that, estoy abuelo por 202 niños por Iglesia. I have 202, like, adopted grandkids at my church. Why? Because they come up to me and say, "Grandpa, grandpa." Maybe because of my goatee. But my, my pastor said, "No, they may never see their grandparents, but with what's going on with ICE, they may never see their parents." Okay? And then the other thing, I've been working with immigrants since the first Trump administration, and I was at the courthouse. I helped, I was down at ICE where the faith community showed up, and that was powerful. I helped shut down Norco and Sheridan, the detention centers. And just so you know that I'm not kind of like going off, I'm one of 13 graduates for Villanova's University Immigration Program, which is DOJ-accredited, so I know the law. I'm a graduate from the Certificate Program in Notre Dame, so I know faith. I'm a graduate from Seattle University. So you know what else, Commissioners, I know? My bachelor's is in public administration, so I know what you're going through. But I mean, still, you have political responsibility and you have moral responsibility to declare this emergency. And, yeah, let's, let's not treat it as like a political action, but let's treat it as reclaiming our community. We need to reclaim our community. That's what we need to do. Reclaim the community. Thank you.
Clerk Moss? Clerk Moss, who do we have next?
That completes the in-room, so the last two are online. We have Austin Eversole. Austin, can you hear us? Can you hear us, Austin?
Austin, are you still there?
Okay. We'll go to the next one, which is Dre Luz Vierl. Can you hear us?
Dre, are you there? Okay.
All right. Can you hear us now? We cannot hear you. I was trying to, if anyone has written testimony, they can send it to the WashCo Clerk at washingtoncountyor.gov, and we will add it to public records. So, Madam Chair, that completes tonight's testimony.
Thank you. Or you can email that to bcc@washingtoncountyor.gov. Thank you, Clerk Moss. And with that, I'll move on to board meeting announcements. This Thursday, October 30th, we'll have a roundtable that starts at 1:00 PM. Please note the correction of the time. On Tuesday, November 4th, we'll have our work session that starts at 9:00 AM. We'll pause that and then have our business meeting starting at 10:00, and then we will reconvene in our work session meeting after that. On Thursday, November 6th, we'll have a Washington County Board of Commissioners Roundtable starting at 9:00 AM. And on Friday, November 7th, we'll have a Clean Water Services Board of Directors Work Session Day starting at 9:00. The following Tuesday, Tuesday, November 11th, is Veterans Day, a national holiday, so we will not be holding board meetings that day. On Tuesday, November 18th, we will have our work session starting at 2:00 PM in the afternoon, and our board meeting will be an evening meeting. The following Tuesday, the week of Thanksgiving, we will not be holding any board meetings, hence while we are having our work session and board meeting in the evening the prior Tuesday, November 18th. Are there any other board announcements for this evening? Seeing none, I'd like to ask for a motion to adjourn tonight's meeting.
Don't move.
Do we have a second?
Okay.
All those in favor, please vote by raising your hand or saying aye. Thank you, Commissioners. Any opposed? The motion carries unanimously five to zero. We are hereby adjourned. Thank you.